Good evening and welcome to the January twenty-one, twenty twenty-five City Council regular hybrid meeting. I'm Mayor Saleem Neese. This evening's hybrid City Council meeting is being brought to you in person and by Zoom. We're also broadcasting live on MITV Channel twenty-one and the city's YouTube channel. Welcome to all, and thanks for joining us tonight. Council members, please have your microphones turned on for the roll call. City Clerk Andrea Larson, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Androl.
Here.
Councilmember Jacobson.
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Here.
Councilmember Wyker.
Here.
Councilmember Weinberg.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Here.
And Mayor Neese.
Here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And City Clerk, please note that Councilmember Androl is joined via Zoom. And next, we have Pledge of Allegiance. If you're in council chambers, please stand and face the flag. And if you're on the video, please turn off your camera.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We now move to approval of tonight's agenda. If there's no questions, may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I would move to amend the agenda to include a statement from the council on recent graffiti that was found in the community.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Moved by Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum, seconded by Councilmember Jacobson. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Androl.
Aye.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor?
You said, "Call the roll."
I assume what you meant is, "We're voting on the agenda rather than calling the roll." So then we already called the roll, didn't we?
Sorry. We, do we need to take a motion on amendment to the...
Yes.
We can do it either way. We can do amend to add a statement addressing the recent hate-based vandalism at Ireland or Middle School as the first item of regular business and approve the agenda as amended.
Okay.
So we can do it all as one field.
That works for me. Just didn't want to call the roll twice and not vote on the agenda.
Got it. Okay. Please call the roll.
Okay. Did Councilmember Androl, Mayor Neese.
Aye.
Councilmember Jacobson.
Aye.
Councilmember Wyker.
Aye.
Councilmember Weinberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Aye.
And Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Motion passes. Agenda is approved. The next item of agenda is a study session on AB six-six-zero-one, Sustainability Work Plan Update. We welcome Sustainability Program Analyst Alana D. Rigatas. Welcome.
Hi. Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, hi, council. I'm just gonna give my slides a moment to load. Yeah, so tonight we'll be talking about the progress we've made thus far in the sustainability work program over the past year. And just a brief agenda, gonna run through the history of sustainability at the city of Mercer Island, gonna talk through, just a quick review of the Climate Action Plan, just a little refresher, as well as some of the twenty-thirty targets that we're most focused on, how we're implementing right now, progress on implementation to date, and the highest priority work plan items for this new biennium. So, as mentioned, just a quick kind of run-through on the history of sustainability in the city. In two thousand seven, the city adopted greenhouse gas reduction targets for twenty-twenty through twenty-fifty, and in twenty-eleven, the city became a founding member of the K-4C, or the King County Cities Climate Collaboration. In twenty-twenty-one, the twenty-fifty target for the city was amended to a ninety-five percent reduction in greenhouse gas emissions compared to a two thousand seven baseline, and that was in line with some reevaluations King County had done. And then, most recently, in twenty-twenty-three, the city adopted the Climate Action Plan, as it is now, so. The action plan is broken out into six focus areas listed up here. The Climate Action Plan is also referred to as the CAP. But these six focus areas encompass the fifty-nine different actions that the plan entails. Fifty-four percent of these actions are currently in progress. And just have a quick visual, just to kind of highlight that. We've done a lot of work thus far in the cross-cutting and municipal sector, as well as buildings and energy. We have three completed actions entirely. So lots of stuff ongoing and in progress, but we still have some work ahead of us. So these are just some, just a select group of the twenty-thirty targets that are included in the Climate Action Plan. I am just highlighting these because they are relevant for some of the actions that we've already started. As I mentioned before, we set in two thousand seven a fifty percent reduction target compared to two thousand seven-level emissions for the city. Additionally, we're looking to achieve carbon-neutral municipal operations by twenty-thirty. We're also looking to achieve a fifty-six percent reduction in on-road transportation emissions, a seventy percent overall waste diversion rate, a five percent increase in tree cover on private land, and a ten percent, or achievement of getting ten percent of public open spaces in the monitoring and maintenance restoration phase. So I'll get into what that means a little later. So yeah, I'm just gonna run through some of the biggest things we've done so far in implementing the Climate Action Plan. There's a series of actions that are gonna be highlighted with an asterisk, and those were all ones that council had identified as priority early actions in the mid-season, the planning session back in twenty-twenty-three, after the plan was adopted. So, starting off, the greenhouse gas tracking and reporting. In the Climate Action Plan, the city committed to doing annual updates on greenhouse gas emissions to track our progress towards those overall goals, and maintaining a publicly-available dashboard, which we launched last year with the twenty-twenty-two report. So happy to say the twenty-twenty-three report is now online. It's on the city website. As for what the report entails, we saw a very slight decrease in emissions, which is still on the right track. It's just a one percent, less than one percent decrease compared to twenty-twenty-two, last time we reported, and that constitutes about a seven percent decrease from two thousand seven. So we still have about forty-three percent to go to reach our twenty-thirty goal, but we still have some time. We also saw that municipal operations emissions have continued to decrease. We went down a further eighteen percent compared to twenty-twenty-two, and again, we're looking to retrieve carbon neutrality, which would be a full net zero of emissions. This decrease for municipal operations specifically was mostly due to a change in how we have started tracking the municipal solid waste data. We did a series of waste audits at city facilities, as well as parks, over the last year to kind of get a more accurate tracking system for that municipal waste. And I was going to say before that I'm gonna pause after each of these slides, just because we're gonna jump from topic to topic, so I wanted to get questions in real time. If anyone has any, please feel free to stop me.
Okay. Councilmember Reynolds.
You had a slide a few minutes ago that had the goals for tree cover and carbon, et cetera, all those goals. We obviously didn't make the twenty-five percent by twenty-twenty. We're targeting fifty percent by twenty-thirty. If everything goes really well, what do you think we're realistically gonna end up at at twenty-twenty-three? And also on those other goals, are we likely to meet those?
So, the twenty-twenty goals, I'd actually have to look, because there was such a drastic decrease in emissions in twenty-twenty, mostly due to COVID impacts, that we actually might have achieved that goal temporarily, or gotten somewhat close to it, but not entirely.
Since we're only seven percent down now.
Yeah, we've gone up since twenty-twenty. It's hard to say a lot of, we completed a wedge analysis during the CAP creation process that was kind of looking at, what does the city need to do in comparison to what's just being done at a federal level, the state level? PSE is making their grid greener. That's having huge impacts on our emissions. That's really not anything that's in action on our part. So, all of that to say, I really, it's gonna be tough to tell for the greenhouse gas emissions. Obviously, we have quite a gap to close on the community emissions, so we're hopeful, but also realistic. As for some of those other goals, it's completely achievable. The waste goal, actually, residential waste for twenty-twenty-three was already hovering right around that seventy percent mark. It's just gonna be a matter of getting the commercial and multifamily rates to get up there as well. They're hovering at like thirty percent, so we have some work to do there. As for the tree canopy coverage, we are gonna be doing a new, like, assessment of tree canopy, hopefully this year. So we'll have more answers on that after that assessment is done.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Okay. Carry on.
All right. So, the next action was on the heat pump rebates and education. So, right now, we participate in the Energy Smart Eastside Program. It's an initiative of the Eastside Climate Partnership that we are in with some other neighboring eastside cities. So this program kicked off in twenty-twenty-two, but this year it really made major strides. Just as a kind of refresher on this program overall, it is broken out into two tracks. We have the Boost Program, which is focused at low-income households, and for those, heat pump installation installs are entirely covered through the program. There's a rebate program for moderate income levels, where there's just an equipment rebate offered towards installing a heat pump. In addition to both of those programs, there's also just a discount on the equipment that's offered through our distribution partner, so anybody is eligible for that through the program. So in twenty-twenty-four, we saw a big increase in installs. Overall, we've gotten over twenty installs on the island through this program, which is really exciting. I also just wanted to highlight, in the chart on the right, the city has made a pretty small investment in this program, but through grants and other sort of partnerships, we have managed to get a lot of funding for this. So the vast majority of all of these installs were funded by grants, which is really exciting. And I think a benefit of the Eastside Climate Partnership is that we're able to go after these grants as a unit that we probably would have more trouble getting alone, so. And that's just a photo from a tour that Governor Inslee took at Acres of Diamonds House in Issaquah, that received a heat pump through the program. So, any questions on this one?
Not seeing any.
All right. So this next one is on mandatory composting and recycling. This was another council-identified early action, and it's primarily focused around making sure that we are in line with state laws on having organics in places where organics is required to be, as well as any recycling laws. So we kicked off a project with a consultant late, mid to late last year, that was mostly directed around compliance with that state organics management law, and also just overall looking to improve diversion rates across commercial and multifamily properties. As I mentioned before, it was about thirty-one percent in twenty-twenty-three, so if we're gonna look to get to that overall community-wide average of seventy percent, we have a ways to go there. That consultant that we worked with contacted forty-nine properties on Mercer Island for outreach and compost implementation. According to some guidance from ecology, it's a little fuzzy how, what businesses are necessarily going to be required to comply under the organics management law, because it's tiered based on how much organics waste you're generating, and if you're not already separating out your organics waste, you might not know how much that is. So essentially, by twenty-twenty-six, any commercial business or school will have to have compost service if they are generating over ninety-six gallons of compost per month, which, if you're not already separating it up, you probably don't know. So, we targeted twenty businesses that may be subject to the state law. As I mentioned, the school district also is, but they are already composting at all of their sites that would be impacted. So the consultant has been working hard. Also, we tried to loop in multifamily into this. So even though they are not impacted by this state law, again, we have quite a gap to close, and lots of residents who could benefit from having compost service. So, we only started implementing with some of these sites that the consultant's been working with back in November, and they've already diverted over three additional tons of waste from the landfill, so. Food waste, which is exciting. Any questions on this one?
Okay. Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
I think a lot of where does the, sort of, onus for that fall? I mean, is it on the, so, I mean, if you're a, if you're a business that shares, you know, is in a building with six other businesses, does the responsibility to arrange that kind of compost service fall on you, or is that on your landlord? I mean, because if you're one of, like, how does that shake out?
It's a little fuzzy in some of those shared situations where they share dumpsters. So in those instances, the consultant's been reaching out to the property management, as well as the businesses, and that's honestly where it's kind of challenging to get this over the finish line in terms of implementation, because then it becomes, whose job is this? So we're trying to go through both angles, but in terms of the law compliance, it would fall for the business, not just the building and the property manager.
How do you count in a situation like that, if it's a shared dumpster?
Like, in terms of who would be paying for it, or...
Yeah, I mean, or how much, if that's six businesses that are in the building, one, only one is subject to the law, how do I know if they're up or down in there?
Yeah, so it's gonna be based on, like, which of those businesses is even generating food waste. So if you have, that's like a food waste, or like a food establishment, and then some offices, you can probably safely assume that the offices are gonna be generating a lot less food waste, and would not fall under that, or would fall well under that requirement for how much they need to be generating. So, it's definitely a bit of a gray area, but...
Depends on if there's picky eaters in the office.
Yeah, that too.
Okay. Anything else? Not seeing anything. Thank you.
All right. So this next one is also related to waste, and also was a council-identified early action. This one was driven, was not in the CAP, as a side note. So this was not included in the Climate Action Plan, but it was identified as something we should prioritize, and that was to offer residents an alternative way to recycle some items that are not typically accepted curbside, but to offer them curbside. So the city partnered with Ridwell to hold two pickup events, one in June and one in October, and those were focused on collecting plastic film and styrofoam from residents. So this was free pickups for residents. They were offered for both single-family and multifamily households, and through these pickups, we collected over thirty-six hundred pounds of waste that would have otherwise maybe ended up in the trash, so. Another good win for waste diversion. Any questions on this one?
Is that all we have to answer?
Yeah.
No? Carry on.
All right. Okay, so, this one is another early action. This one is centered on the electric lawn and construction equipment, so primarily on leaf blowers. Per council direction, the Parks Operations Team purchased some electric leaf blowers to pilot back in mid-two thousand twenty-three to evaluate whether or not it would be wise to implement a ban sooner rather than later. With the funding that council provided, the Parks Operations Team evaluated six different brands of electric leaf blowers. They bought a total of five backpacks. Two of those from the same manufacturer died within the first year. We were able to get a warranty on those, but we were not able to return them to the manufacturer, and as they are more than fifty percent plastic, they ended up in the dumpster, which was unfortunate. We still have three operational backpacks and four handheld electric blowers. We've been gathering some comments from staff and getting feedback on those, and they've said that they're really great for certain tasks. They're definitely a lot quieter, and they can help avoid having gravel blow around in certain situations, but they do have a limited range of motion in the blower arm compared to the gas counterparts, and even with a full charge, they only tend to last around forty minutes, which is a lot lower than the batteries are advertised as lasting. And part of that challenge is due to the fact that with the electric blowers, they tend to have multiple different modes that you can operate on, a pretty low power, and then higher power, and then as you use the higher power, which staff are using often, drains the battery a lot faster. A couple other quick stats on the electric blower versus the gas. The electric blowers are three times as expensive as the gas blowers, and almost twice as heavy due to the battery and the backpack, and they're substantially less powerful than the gas counterparts. So, staff would like to continue piloting with the electric blowers. We think there's a lot of opportunity for these to get better in the coming years. Some of our neighbors, including Seattle and Kirkland, have bans that are due to go to effect in two thousand twenty-five and two thousand twenty-seven, so we would just like to have the opportunity to evaluate how those roll out in those cities, and then proceed from there. So, I'll pause for questions on this one.
Council, any questions?
Are they collecting any, like, actual noise data? How much quieter?
It's kind of hard to measure. In one of the exhibits that was with this, I had a decibel level chart from my experience, limited experience with the blowers. They tend to sound like a very loud hairdryer, but it is quieter than a regular gas-powered leaf blower. But we would need to get some sort of, like, decibel meter to actually measure the difference. I've tracked, I think, in that chart as well, what they, what the manufacturer says is like kind of the noise levels for the ones that advertises it. So they're not silent, but quieter.
Got it. Councilmember Wyker.
So, are we gonna replace the ones that broke, or kind of consider that on hold for the moment, or is this pilot sort of halfway through, or what's the status on what to do with those broken ones?
So, we did actually replace them. So those were, I think, the two original backpacks that we got. So now we have three backpacks. I think we ended up getting at least one from a different brand, that we've kind of were piloting a couple different things from them, and the pilot's still ongoing. Staff are still using these. They're reporting that it's very challenging more in the winter months, because leaves are a lot heavier, and there's more of them, so. These are very useful in the summer, though.
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah.
And just to clarify, you said two have already hit the trash bin?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I personally had to put them in the trash, and it was not fun. I did, the batteries were recycled, though. I did make sure the batteries made it to the recycling.
Okay. Carry on. Councilmember Reynolds.
I'm sure this will be an unpopular suggestion for the people that have to do it, but are there circumstances in which an old-fashioned rake would be not much slower?
So I think that is also part of the challenge, is with these being a lot less powerful, is that it takes staff more time to clean certain areas, and I think a rake would likely be even less than that, and so that is something with park operations, that they are trying to balance is staff time spent on activities, and I don't wanna be the one to suggest that they use a rake, but it could be something that they can evaluate in certain circumstances. I'm sure there's some instances where...
Alana, maybe I can jump in here. I don't know what's going on with my camera. Jesse Bonn, I'm the city manager. So, we do have regular handheld park maintenance, right-of-way maintenance tools that we use, especially when working in smaller areas. Most of what we're doing, though, is what's seen in this picture, large, large areas of leaf removal, and in that case, cleaning up by hand would be incredibly inefficient.
Didn't we find last year some sort of electric vehicle that would do paths in park and park areas like this?
Electric sweeper. Jason, are you online?
Yeah. I actually put my camera on to answer the same question, so.
Okay.
So, Jason, County Park Operations, yes. So, there are some possibilities, tow behind electric options that we continue to explore. However, we are talking really, really large areas and heavy leaf debris coverage, so they do use rakes often when they get to the final cleanup on things, but to get everything consolidated, they're using blowers. We do tow behinds, and there are some opportunities for some battery-powered technology in smaller applications that we continue to explore, but at this point in time, it's, it comes down to a number of hours and manpower capabilities to get the amount and volume of leaves picked up and collected within the timeframe.
And Jason, there's a question specifically related to the, I think we were seeking funding for a trail and sidewalk machine that was battery-operated, but we did not get that funding and did not purchase that equipment, correct?
Correct. And there is an option, actually, in our larger sweeper, there is an option for battery-powered technology. The price point is significantly higher, but it's likely the council may be seeing that come back to them as an option for consideration in the future. So it's something that we continue to explore. It's not easy, it's not technically apples to apples on everything, but it's something that we continue to look at, and we'll be back in front of the council, in particular with the sweeper option in the near future.
So just to make sure I understand, were we seeking grant funding on the sweeper? I thought we had funded it ourselves. I couldn't recall, though.
We were seeking funding from the state legislature.
Okay.
Correct. And I would say it was also, it's also both, on the sweeper, larger sweep apparatus, we fund a lot of it through our fleet fund, but the additional costs above and beyond that would be something that we have in account for. So also grant opportunities to fund the rest of that is something to pursue as well.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Weinberg.
Yeah, so it sounds like with this pilot, we're doing our due diligence to make sure that whatever system we invest in is something that's going to work, so I applaud the efforts. I, it's sobering to hear that not all the machines worked, and that they're not able to keep up with the gas machines. I trust that the developers of these machines are also developing or advancing a technology so that there may be an option in the future that will do better than these. I presume we're watching to see what additional options arise?
Yes, exactly. That's what I'm hoping to take a little bit more time, see as things develop, and evaluate hopefully in the next few years.
Okay. Please carry on.
All right. Sticking with the natural resources theme here, this next one is the creation of the monitoring and maintenance baseline for city open spaces. So as I mentioned, we have a goal of getting ten percent of open spaces at least to this baseline, so this action was centered around establishing what that baseline is. So the city contracted with a consultant to do a forest health assessment, the results of which are due at the end of this month, actually, and it included a very thorough examination of our open spaces, including tree canopy, as well as the understory, so looking at stuff such as soil health, tree canopy coverage, the species diversity in our open spaces. So this data will be used to help develop plans for how we're gonna continue to restore some spaces, and how we can say safely that, oh, this region of an open space has shifted into this monitoring and maintenance phase as opposed to active restoration. So is there any questions on this one?
Not seeing any.
Okay. And the final action we're updating on for things that have already been implemented is the tree planting incentive program. So we had the goal of, by twenty-twenty-three, seeing a five percent increase in tree cover on private land, and so in order to help make progress towards that, we implemented a incentive program wherein homeowners can apply for vouchers to be redeemed at regional nurseries to be able to plant a appropriate species of tree on their private land. So, that was a collaboration between a couple different departments within Public Works, including Natural Resources, Stormwater, and Sustainability, so. It was a successful collaboration thus far. We've issued fifty-one vouchers, and everything kicked off at Summer Celebration this year.
Now, is that program closed now?
It is ongoing, although we only recommend planting the trees generally in the fall. So, you could still redeem for a voucher, but just wouldn't recommend planting until later.
And how does somebody get one of those?
It is on the city website. Yes, there is a link for folks to apply.
Very good.
Okay.
All right. So, those were all of the updates on items that have already been implemented, so this part is gonna be looking ahead at some of the things we're gonna be doing over the next two years. So starting off with the final action that was identified by council as an early action, we're gonna be doing a green power program campaign with PSE, the goal of which is a hundred new signups this calendar year, so to get us from our current level of about fourteen hundred to fifteen hundred, and the prize for reaching that will be ten thousand dollars from PSE that we're hoping to use potentially at the upcoming planned public safety and maintenance building, or otherwise just a community solar install. Just as a refresher on what the green power program is, it's an additional small charge on a customer's utility invoice. You can opt to match up to a hundred percent of your electricity usage with renewable energy, so that would help also benefit our community emissions, because that helps bring down those customers' emissions that factors into our overall. So, could be a great win to get us to close that forty-three percent gap. Any questions on this one?
Councilmember Wyker.
Wasn't the last program, like, eight years ago?
It was a while ago, yes, and the, I think it was in twenty thirteen, actually, and the panels that are out here at the community center in the photo were funded by some of the prize money from PSE for that campaign, so, yeah, hoping to build on that momentum here.
Good old days of PSE.
Good old days.
All right. Carry on.
Sticking with the solar theme, we're also gonna be doing a solarized eastside campaign that we're doing in partnership with the other cities in the Eastside Climate Partnership. It's launching, hopefully, in late February for enrollments. We're actually evaluating RFPs that we receive from contractors later this week. We received sixteen, so it's very exciting to get so many, and we're really excited about trying to encourage more residential solar installs. Any questions on this one?
Not seeing any.
All right. And now the biggest one, we're gonna be starting to kick off work on the EV charging infrastructure plan. This is a major action that is... This is a major action that is identified in the climate action plan. It's focused on an overall community-level charging plan, but we have chosen to break it out into two different phases for a variety of reasons, one of which we applied for and received a grant from the Department of Commerce, Climate Planning Grant specifically to do this work. And it needs to be done by June. And additionally, we're hoping to align the development of this plan with the design process for the public safety and maintenance building to make sure that we're getting the most out of it. So kicking off tomorrow, we're going to be focusing on the municipal phase. This is going to include a municipal fleet electrification roadmap, which is itself a separate action in the climate action plan. And it's going to also look at how we can plan out charging without planning to install a bunch of chargers for a fleet that doesn't exist yet so we can be strategic about those building plans and making sure we have conduit in place and don't have to break up a parking lot later. And then the plan is to, after June, after we get this initial phase kicked off and completed, to start to work on development of the community-wide plan. So any questions on this one?
Councilmember Reynolds.
I know you're going to probably grimace at this because it's hard, but to what extent have we considered coordinating with the school district to look for some synergies on the charging infrastructure?
That is specifically called out in the action, so we have to. And I have been in conversations with the school district already about this. Their current, they are currently working on installing more chargers in the near future at the school district and also looking at their electrification plan. So that's more going to be in the community phase. So after this initial kickoff for June, probably, the goal is to have the community-wide plan done by the end of the biennium. So we'll be engaging the school district more in earnest in the coming months.
Okay.
All right. So those are all the really big actions. All these other ones are mostly ongoing things. So we're going to complete this year a 2024 greenhouse gas report and dashboard update. We plan to continue participating in the Energy Smart East Side program and support program expansion beyond just heat pumps. We're looking at other options for folks that would be most beneficial as they look to become more energy efficient. We're going to continue to work on increasing the waste diversion rate islandwide, encourage further tree planting. We're also looking to prepare for compliance with the Washington Clean Buildings Performance Standard, both for city buildings, which is going to be just the community center, this building, and as well as hoping or helping to make sure that other building owners on the island are aware of what they need to do because the first compliance date is coming up here in 2026. We're also looking to begin development of a municipal environmentally preferable purchasing policy, here probably kicking off later this year or early next year. I'll pause for questions here.
Okay. Councilmember Weimbert.
Alana, thank you for all that great work. It's so cool to see all these programs and especially all the regional collaboration you're doing with all the other cities. So I want to give you a minute to brag about what you're doing with K-4C and the Energy Smart and the regional work that you're doing. I hear all the sustainability managers get together regularly to kind of talk about what you're each doing and how that's working and then getting support from the county. And it just sounds like a really cool thing you're doing with your peers in the region. So I just want to give you a chance to brag about that.
Yeah, absolutely. So the community-wide emissions report this year was actually done in a collaboration with the K-4C. They did a whole update for King County. They hadn't done one in several years. So we got to benefit from tagging into that greater one. And then we did our separate municipal one. And yes, meeting with the other cities in the East Side Climate Partnership on a very regular basis, looking at how we can continue to build on the momentum we've already started to see in Energy Smart East Side, if there's any other grants we can go after, any other ways that we want to try to strategically partner on things. Having a lot of conversations about a lot of different things.
Which is really cool you can leverage. Thank you.
Yes, it's so helpful to be able to leverage that as a smaller city.
Councilmember Weimbert.
Yeah, so this is wonderful progress that we've been making. I think we've known from the beginning that in order to really meet our greenhouse gas emission goals long-term, we need to change how we heat and how we drive. And the biggest piece of that, or the biggest building block, was, it came from the state in the building codes where we required essentially all new construction to have a heat, primary heating, air heating system that's as efficient as a heat pump, meaning it's pretty much required as a heat pump, and that also every new construction and major remodel has an electric vehicle charger in the garage. So they have the ability to support electric vehicles, which all new vehicles are going to be electric vehicles by 2035. So I was wondering if we have already done a study or if we could do a study that looks at the year preceding that new law, saying that we have to have a heat pump and a charger in all new housing and the year afterwards and see, were there a lot of new construction or a lot of major remodels that used gas beforehand and that are all now using heat pumps? And how much did that really move the needle for a city like Mercer Island that I presume has something on the order of 200 new construct, or new house construction each year? I'm using round figures because I don't know the exact number, but it'd be interesting to see how much that has helped move the needle on the greenhouse gas.
Yeah, it would definitely be interesting to see. I know that part of that, like I mentioned before, the wedge that was done for the cap process, it was factoring in all of those different, like, federal and state laws and especially that one for seeing how much that was going to drive down. But that was all based on assumptions of what that was going to do. But I can look and see if there's been any studies done or if there's any way to pull reliable permit data to evaluate that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Reynolds, did you have one?
No.
Okay. Councilor. Are we at the end?
Yep, we are at the end.
Okay. Councilor Jacobson.
Excellent report. This is a night and day difference of the information and analysis we used to get prior to your tenure, so well done. I have a couple of questions. One is, what is the diversion rate? I don't understand how that's calculated. What, when we say we're diverting 61%, what does that mean?
So the diversion rate, you want to think of it as diversion away from the landfill. So we look at the total amount of waste that leaves Mercer Island, regardless of what truck it goes in. And then you just focus on just what goes in a compost and then in recycling. And so that is the diversion rate. So when we say 71% is diverted away from the landfill, that means it went in a compost bin or a recycling bin as a percent of the total amount of waste.
Okay, is that done by weight?
Yes, done by tonnage.
Thank you.
Yes.
I have some other questions. One, it's my turn again, if ever.
I'm not seeing a huge appetite from other council members, so carry on.
Okay. What's the difference in cost by way of percentage or whatever measure between this green power program and just paying your PSE bill without being part of that?
I think PSE estimates that it's about an extra $4 per invoice to opt in. And you can, I think there's the option to choose, like I mentioned, you can do up to 100% of your electricity usage. You could choose 50%, 25% and still be opted into the program. And then that would change how much. It's just relative to however many, like, kilowatt-hours you're using on your invoice.
Thank you.
Okay. Council, any other questions, comments? Okay, not seeing anything. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the city manager report. We welcome city manager Jesse Vaughn.
Good evening again. There's my screen share. Happy Tuesday. Next slide, please. Council, this is a good time to remind you that we'll be spending a lot of time together on Tuesday, February 4th. We'll be gathering at noon for four or maybe five hours for our annual city council planning session. We have two primary agenda items. It'll be our kickoff to the public safety and maintenance building design discussion. We'll also be talking with Public Works about the water supply pipeline replacement. Following our planning session, just so you're anticipating that long day, we will have a regular city council meeting. I also want to call out that the second meeting in February has been canceled. It lands on mid-winter break. We have a number of council members and staff members that are traveling. So the next regular meeting will be the first one in March. Just a reminder that our board and commission meetings are all online. Coming up next is the planning commission. They will be meeting this week. This will be their first meeting together. So we have lots of things planned for them, including important training. Next slide. Got a range of updates for you. First of all, we emailed you last week. And this is just a reminder, we do have one vacancy on the Arts Council. That is because I believe we appointed one of the Arts Council members to the new planning commission. So we are doing a quick recruitment, hoping to fill that seat by early March. We will be accepting applications through February 25th. And if all goes well, you will be making that appointment on March 4th. Not to forget that we will be following this with our regular annual recruitment that will start probably in February or March with appointments coming later in May. All the information to apply is on our website. Next slide. I have a handful of construction updates for you. As you know, we've had a lot of work going on in the city. This is an update on the Island Crestway crosswalk improvements, which are taking place in and around Islander Park Elementary School. I forgot the name of the school there momentarily. Particularly, we're, up next is the installation of the pedestrian signal and the flashing beacons at Southeast 62nd and Southeast 63rd, again, near Island Park Elementary. Really appreciative of Public Works crews and our contractor. We've timed the construction to happen the week of midwinter break. And then the follow-up work to happen the week of spring break to minimize impacts to the school and everyone that travels up and down Island Crestway every day. So more news coming, but those projects are still in the queue and we're ready to start the next phase on midwinter break. Next slide, please. In the town center, you've probably noticed, we've made some changes to the traffic signals. We've done minor upgrades to four of our city traffic signals. And just a reminder, we partner with King County Transportation on the traffic signal work on the island. They've updated signal timings and activated new four-section left-turn signal heads, which basically means we have new left-turn signals at Southeast 27th and 77th and Southeast 27th and 78th. As you see us stepping up and adding things like this, it's because the intersections are getting bigger or busier, excuse me, not bigger. And this will improve traffic flow through the town center. All this work is timed to be happening ahead of the opening of the light rail anticipated for later this year. Some other things we're working on in the town center include new pedestrian push buttons and enhanced signal heads. We're almost 90% complete, so excited to be wrapping up that work very soon. Next slide. Thrift shop construction. This project has been, wow, a long time in the making. If you've ever been to the thrift shop when it's raining and you were standing under the covered walkway, you would notice that it was still raining on you because the walkway has been leaking so badly for quite a while. So we are happy to announce that we have, we went out to bid. We have a contractor on board to do the covered walkway replacement. We did counsel, explore alternatives to closing the thrift shop, but the result was a prolonged and more expensive project. So we have made the decision to shut the thrift shop down from February 8th to 22nd, to the 22nd, to get most of the construction work done on that walkway. And while the thrift shop is closed, if you've been inside lately, you know, we have a lot of other repair work that needs to be done. So we're going to also be doing some painting and repairing while the thrift shop is down. During this time, we won't be taking donations. And obviously, we won't be allowing shopping at that time either. We hate to, we hate to close the thrift shop. It's doing quite well and bringing in money, but we can't defer this maintenance anymore. However, we know we'll come back stronger and hopefully busier. And we'll look forward to everyone's support when we bring it back online. You might be wondering, do we have a communications plan? Yes, yes, we do. We know our shoppers and those that loyally donate will be very disappointed about this closure. So we have a robust communications plan in the works. In fact, you'll start seeing announcements going out about this, I believe, this week. Next slide. From YFS, really excited to announce that we're launching Parent Lab, which is a new parent support program that's funded by the Best Starts for Kids grant that we were just recently awarded. These are in-person, interactive workshops that teach parenting skills and build on the content of the Mercer Island, Parenting Mercer Island Online Tool. These programs are facilitated by our very own YFS counselors. A wide range of topics will be covered, stress and anxiety, connecting and communicating with your child, and more. If you have any questions about the program, Michelle Ritter's email address is at the bottom of the slide. Next slide, please. All right, a few upcoming events. I was just thinking about this today. I'll make sure that KC adds these events to your calendars if we have not done so already. Up first is Sunday, February 2nd. We'll be celebrating the Lunar New Year here at the community center. This is the year of the snake. We have lots of fun things planned and many, many partners come together to make this event happen every year. Last year's event was quite popular, so much so that we had a parking problem. So while the event is free, we are asking everyone to register ahead of time. And the link to register is on the bottom of the screen. Next slide. Looking ahead to March, we are doing another event that was very successful last year. This is our Senior Resource Fair, which will be here at the community center on Saturday, March 1st, from 10 to 12. This is a free event for island seniors, their partners and families that are caring for seniors. Really fun. We welcome in a variety of local businesses and vendors. And it's just a great networking, community event. Lots and lots of resources here, so stop on by, even if you don't count yourself into, in the senior age category. It's open for everybody. Next slide, please. And some good news. Council, I know you've probably been keeping along with our weekly updates on this. We are really excited. Matt Morneck, our finance director, is sitting in front of me. I know he's, he's really excited. We launched today, actually, our new financial management software. This has been, gosh, two years in the works, lots and lots and lots of hours, more than I could even describe. This is taking a very outdated software system and really bringing us into the new age. Our staff have been in trainings. We have several more months of trainings to go. The finance team has just done an excellent job rolling us over. So bear with us. We're still, we're still learning how to use it, but it's going to improve our reporting and communication with all of you. And my hat's off to the finance department for a great launch and two years of really outstanding work. Next slide, please. Pause on Patrol. This program is, I guess it's technically relaunching. Our police support officer, Andrea Skinkovic, who you may not have met yet, I think she joined us within the last year, has been working on plans to relaunch and build up the Police Department Pause on Patrol program, which is really just a program for people that are out walking their pets that encourages them to be eyes and ears on our community and to report things they see to the police department. So we'll be holding our first meeting and training event of this year. And this will start producing a quarterly newsletter, which I'll make sure, Chief Sutter is sitting here to my left, that we share our newsletters with you, city council. We're hoping, again, to get more people involved in the Pause on Patrol program. Thank you, Officer Skinkovic, for getting this up and going again. And that is all I have for you this evening.
Thank you, City Manager Vaughn. Mayor, you need to step aside for a second. Our next item of business is appearances. It's the opportunity for anyone to speak to the city council on any item except items requiring a public hearing, any quasi judicial matters or campaign-related matters. City clerks or anyone who has signed up for appearances that wishes to address the council?
Deputy Mayor, there is, there was one person who signed up, but she is not in the audience, so we can move to the next item.
Okay, thank you. We now move to our next item of business, approval of the consent agenda. The consent agenda contains AB 6599, January 10th, 2025 payroll certification, certification of claims for January 3rd and 10th, 2025, certification of electronic fund transfers for November and December 2024, city council regular hybrid meeting minutes of January 7th, 2025, AB 6610 commuter parking project right-of-way dedication, AB 611 commuter parking facility project bid award, AB 6613 approval of the 2025 AFSCME collective bargaining agreement, AB 6614 interlocal agreement with Sourcewell for cooperative purchasing. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So.
So.
Thank you. It was moved by Councilmember Reynolds and seconded by Councilmember Jacobson. To approve the consent agenda, City Clerk, please conduct the roll call vote.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councilmember Reynolds?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacobson?
Aye.
Councilmember Andrell?
Aye.
Councilmember Wyker?
Aye.
And Councilmember Weinberg?
Aye.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Our first business, item of regular business is one that I added. So I will introduce this statement, read into the record. City Clerk, it's supposed to put up on the screen so folks can follow along.
Yes, one second.
Thank you. We commend the swift and diligent efforts of the Mercer Island Police Department to investigate the recent hate-based vandalism at Islander Middle School. Mercer Island is proud to be home to many Jewish institutions and a vibrant Jewish community. Anti-Semitism is no place here, and we stand firmly in solidarity with our Jewish neighbors against hate and intolerance. The individuals responsible for the vandalism sought to sow division through anti-Semitic and racist symbols and phrases, but their actions have only strengthened our community's resolve to stand united against hate. We are heartened by the outpouring of support from residents, local organizations, and faith groups. I'll reaffirming that such acts have no place in Mercer Island. We are grateful to our strong partnership with the Mercer Island School District and for the teachers and staff who work every day to make all the students feel welcome and safe in solidarity against hate. As we move forward, we remain committed to fostering an environment where diversity is celebrated and everyone feels safe and valued. Together, we will continue to uphold the values of respect, inclusion, and unity that define our community. So I would move that the council adopt this statement.
Second.
Thank you. It was motioned by me and adopted by, sorry, seconded by Councilmember Reynolds.
I think I had a tie with Councilmember Weinberg.
A tie with Councilmember Weinberg. Mr. Mayor, I'll speak to this for a moment. First, I want to thank the mayor for working with me on this statement. This has been, this was a really rough year, way to start the year. You know, I think, I can't even remember how we found out about this, but to hear that these, such abhorrent language was placed on middle school walls where hundreds of kids go every day to be part of a community, and to create that sense of community was really harrowing. The folks that did this really had a desire to spread hate and fear, anti-Semitism and racism, and it's just wrong. I'm really grateful for the partnership between our staff, our Police Department. Chief is here, appreciate his thoughtful actions here and his team, you know, to conduct a thorough investigation and find out what needed to be found out here. I also want to commend the School District Superintendent Rundle. This is not an easy task in any way. As dark as it was to learn of these things and to see them written in our community, the opposite was true in terms of how bright it was to see people, the way that the community responded. There's a quote that "all it takes for hate and wickedness to flourish is for good people to do nothing." And I think that what we saw was the exact opposite of that when these incidents occurred. You know, I think instantly, there are people looking to support their neighbors, their Jewish neighbors, their non-Jewish neighbors, looking to see how they could help out. When the post went up asking for information on identifying these two individuals, within hours, there were hundreds of people that had shared that post on Facebook and other platforms, asking people to take a look and saying, hey, someone must know these people. And to me, that's an unequivocal message that there is no tolerance for this sort of behavior in our community. This is not what Mercer Island stands for. Hundred folks have signed a letter from the non-Jewish community to the Jewish community in solidarity, and it means a lot. These things are really hurtful, and it is easy to feel isolated when these things happen, but the response from the community has been one of unity, and it made me proud to be part of this community. So I would ask folks to join me in this statement, and also thank everyone for their support.
Very well, thank you. All right, council, any other discussion?
Not seeing any. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Jacobson?
Aye.
Mayor Neese?
Aye.
Councilmember Andrell?
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilmember Wyker?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum?
Aye.
And Councilmember Weinberg?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, motion passes. Our next item of regular business is AB 6612, the Fire Apparatus Acquisition and Financing Ordinance Number 25-04, first reading, and we welcome Finance Director Matt Morneck and the crew from EFER.
Good evening, Mayor. Matt Morneck, Finance Director. I'm joined tonight by our partners from Eastside Fire and Rescue. Deputy Chief Doug McDonald will start with the presentation, and I will follow up on financing, and then we'll look forward to taking questions from the council.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Doug McDonald, your Deputy Fire Chief, Special Operations EMS and Training for Eastside Fire and Rescue. I also brought Deputy Chief Greg Garat, who is our Support Services Deputy Chief, to help with questions following our presentation this evening. Again, we're referencing Agenda Bill 6612 tonight regarding fire apparatus acquisition and financing. To provide you a little bit of background, since January of 2024, Eastside Fire and Rescue has been providing fire and emergency medical services on Mercer Island through a contract for services. Per the ILA that was signed between Mercer Island and Eastside Fire and Rescue, Mercer Island owns the fire apparatus on the island, and Eastside Fire and Rescue maintains and operates them on a daily basis, both on the island and off. Right now, we're talking about two apparatus that are in need of replacement, that are up for replacement here in 2025. Using industry standards, we consider the useful life of a fire apparatus between 15 and 20 years, depending on its usage and what it's specifically used for. The design specifications for these new apparatus were developed through what we call an engine or an apparatus tag, Technical Assistance Group, and they meet together to develop, and they look at the industry standards, and our group has done that, successfully provided a, and developed a spec sheet for what we're suggesting for Mercer Island Fire to move forward to in the future. The make, model, and build align with both Eastside Fire and Rescue's specifications for apparatus, and as a point, the apparatus that we're suggesting, the manufacturer is the same manufacturer that is currently being used with the current fleet of apparatus on the city of Mercer Island, which is Pierce Manufacturing. Next slide, please. You can notice, you'll see that there's two different styles of fire engines up on the screen there. On the left, you'll see where it says Velocity Pumper. That's a Type 1 fire engine. We'll go into a little bit more detail in the future in the next slide or two, but that is a, what you would see is a standard fire engine responding to both emergency fire and medical-related calls on the island, and it carries a 700-gallon water tank onboard there. You'll notice in that slide, and I'm sure in questions we'll bring it up later, but that picture was taken at the Pacific Palisades with the Mercer Island crew, the engine with the Eastside Fire crews protecting structures with air support. You'll see in the background with the helicopter dropping. That was taken on, I believe, the 11th through 12th of January. Moving to the Freightliner Pumper on the right-hand side of the screen, that's a Type 2 engine, smaller gallons per minute on the pump, and smaller amount of water that it carries. This type of engine, specific to Mercer Island, really, set up for our limited access driveways, roadways to get down to the homes, that our typical Type 1 engines are too large to access. We currently have two on the island, one in the north, one in the south, and we're looking to replace the one that has met its service life. All right. All right, next slide, please. There was a request, and you'll see, we've identified the apparatus that the city of Mercer Island currently maintains for the Fire Department, and we've identified those, hopefully, to make it easy to understand, under the far-left column where it says apparatus number. You'll notice anything that's got a, like, Engine 291, a 1 is the north-end fire station, and anything with a 2 at the end as an Engine 292, or Aid 192, that is at the south end of the station, or south end of the island. And so you can see how we've broken that down to the Maxi Pompers, which are the large Type 1, and then to the Midi Pompers that we talked about, and then all the way down to the aid units as we go there. And we've adjusted and provided you the ability to see what we would look at as a lifespan for those and projected replacement dates. So I'll pause there. Over the last couple of slides, any questions as we move forward?
Councilmember Reynolds?
Yeah, I asked a question about this before the meeting of the City Manager, and I'm not sure I got an answer that I understand. The Midi Pumper that you're replacing is E192, or Maxi Pumper is E192 on that graph, is that correct?
That is correct, the Midi Pumper 192. So that is the one in there, the one that we're going to be replacing is coming from the north end, north station, which is Midi 191. And that's the older model. You'll see it was 2008 with a 16-year lifespan on that. That's the one that we're asking for replacement.
Okay, I misspoke a minute ago. I meant to say the Maxi Pumper, which is 192.
Correct.
And that one, it's described as being overdue for replacement, but this graph shows it is being replaced in 2027 and 2032. Sounds like we're early for replacement.
No, so what, the apparatus we're looking to replace is Engine 292, and you'll see it's the second one, it's a 2008 with a 15- to 20-year cycle, so we're at 2023 as our replacement date. That's the Type 1 that we're looking to replace. So it'd be the 292 and Midi 191. Those are the two that we're looking at.
And I don't want to beat the dead horse here, but the slides you had said the 15-year lifespan was for the primary vehicle. So our primary is only 13 years old, and we're already promoting it to reserve, correct?
So what you're saying is correct. What we do is we do a primary response first out at 10 years, and then we go into reserve status at 5, going for a 15-year lifespan, and at that point, we look at the apparatus and then look to surplus at that point. So it's 10 years as a first-out primary response, and 5 years as a reserve apparatus, which would not be a regular response. It would be when that vehicle went in for mechanical maintenance, or had a mechanical breakdown, or needed testing, we would move that reserve apparatus into that mode. So it's not being used as often as that primary response.
Go ahead.
Need you to come up to Mike.
Councilmember, there's another part to the equation, which is the current delivery time for these engines is 48 to 53 and 1/2 months. So we're looking 4 years plus to get them, so when you add that into the figures, that's where we start looking about delivery time. For the Midi, we're looking at about 38 months before we're able to get that online.
Okay, that's the missing link I was missing. Thank you, because the one slide had said, had implied at least, as I read it, that you took it out of primary after 15 to 20 years, and we were taking it out of primary after 13, but it sounds like it's really going to be 17 because of the 4-year lag in getting it installed.
That's correct.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, thanks, Chief. So, yeah, and so can we go to the next slide on here? It might help. Here we go. So the Velocity Pumper, which Chief Garat was speaking to, is that Type 1 that we showed you, the larger of the two, carries three to four firefighters, and it supports both structural firefighting and initial EMS response. Like I mentioned earlier, it carries 700 gallons of water and has a pump that will pump 1,500 gallons per minute for that. And as we're discussing, the reserve, the current first-out Engine 192 would move into a reserve status for a period of time, and the current reserve would then be scheduled for surplus. So please let me know if that does, it makes sense. It's a little convoluted, but I hope that lays it out. The price for a new fire engine today is $1,250,760.55. And that is, it is a large number, and it increases every quarter. And like Chief mentioned, our build time on those engines right now are 48 to 54 months. And you're going to ask, why is it that way? We are still in an extreme COVID hangover from that, and with COVID dollars, a lot of other agencies throughout the country are, found some money, and they are purchasing vehicles. So it is get in line and wait. So that is, everybody is in that same situation around us. It is not out of any other reason than just sheer capacity for these dealers. Our Freightliner Pumper that we talked about, the Midi 192, or excuse me, 191, that will be replaced. It's smaller. If you want to look at just more efficient, as far as it doesn't burn as much fuel, we don't take that off the island. That rig stays on the island for specific purposes, both for the north and south. Its maneuverability is incredibly better than our current Type 1s. It can get down those narrow driveways, steep driveways, shorter wheelbase for the slope neighborhoods due to the topography and geography that we identified on Mercer Island. And then our plan would be then to surplus, once we receive the new Midi, we would surplus the current Midi 191, and that would surplus out, and those dollars would come back to the city of Mercer Island based off the sale price. The price for that Freightliner Pumper, that Midi, is $717,268.76. And like Chief mentioned, 35- to 40-month lead time, and I'll pause there for any questions.
Okay. Councilmember Andrell?
Thanks, yeah. So will these, two questions. The first one is whether you have an estimate of what we would be able to get for this equipment once we surplus it, and the second one has to do with whether the equipment, the new equipment will live and be housed on Mercer Island, or will it be kind of moving around?
So, great question, thank you. That new equipment, I would venture to say on a high 90%, would be housed and utilized specifically on Mercer Island. The Midi would be on Mercer Island 100%. That is not something that we are looking to take off-island, do wildland or anything. That is a specific piece of apparatus that is necessary for us to manage and provide that level of protection the citizens of Mercer Island are going to expect due to the topography and geography of the island. So those apparatus would stay, our reserve apparatus at times. As you've seen in pictures, we've sent them down to California, reserve apparatus from Mercer Island, so there is some opportunity, but those new apparatus, those would be primary apparatus stationed on Mercer Island.
Okay, thanks. And then in terms of what we might fetch for anything we surplus, is that just too soon to sell, or we wouldn't want to disclose that because we would want to negotiate with somebody?
Well, I think there's a couple of things. That is one reason, and to speculate, I don't want to just throw out a number. I don't, it really depends on the nature, the need, where it's going, who's making that purchase price. I will say that Mercer Island and the mechanics, both with Eastside Fire and Mercer Island, have done an outstanding job in maintaining their apparatus, so as far as it goes for surplus, they would, I would venture to say they'd be on the higher end of the surplus dollar when we would go to do that. But anything more than that would be speculation on my part unless you had something else with that.
And we're still talking four, five years out?
Correct.
Because by the time we get them, there's an onboarding.
Deputy Chief, you have to speak into the microphone.
Okay. Sorry about that. And given that we're looking probably about five years before we're ready to surplus, that's a long time, so to speculate between now and then, but it is a small percentage of the overall purchase price that you're recuperating on a 20-plus-year-old engine, so.
Sure, that's fair. I just had to ask the question. I figured that was going to be the answer, but thank you very much.
Absolutely, thank you.
Councilmember Weinberg?
Yeah, so it's been a couple of years since we first, the concept of the electric fire trucks. I presume when we talked about it last time that they're way too expensive compared to diesel fire trucks. Are we getting any closer, or is it, are we another 10 years away, you think, from having them be close enough to seriously consider?
Great question again. I have some information, so yeah, as far as, I would say your estimate of 10 to 12, 15 years is out. We've seen some fire engines in the country over the last two or three years, and still in a very much of a testing, seeing how they're going to operate. Some Some of the things, and I always like looking at opportunity and not necessarily at the negative of things, but I do want to bring some things up that I expected the question and so there are some range limitations as far as where they're going, how fast they're going, how long they're on scene, how much they're operating on a fire scene, they're not something that we would be considering to send out on any type of statewide or out-of-state deployment like we have with our other engine, just because of the distance that they can go. Charging infrastructure, we just went through talking about that on the island, but what that looks like within the fire stations, it's a much larger component to keep and charge that fire engine. Also, that fire engine's out during the day and doing their things or they're not necessarily being able to charge as they go, they get back, they plug in, they have another multiple additional calls, it's just a charging concern that we really, we want that, it's close to that 100% insurance that we can get where we're going, when we need to go, so that is a charging infrastructure issue. They are still incredibly high now, you see the price of that, basically double that price for an electric fire engine. The other component with that is maintenance complexity. With our mechanics, their training to work on those, they would get additional training on the limited amount of electric vehicles, but a lot of additional training for that within our infrastructure within the community and then they also have to maintain their qualifications on all of the other fleets. The other factor with the maintenance component is just the battery replacement. Now, we talked about lifespan, 10 years lifespan on a battery pack, that battery pack replacement is $500,000, so that's what we're looking there. Not saying never, I'm just saying right now that we're not quite there in the fire service. Going to the other side and the opportunity, the positive, fire departments always looking at ways, efficiencies is what we operate on, there's something to say about looking at our staff vehicles, our fire marshals' vehicles potentially in the future, our five years from now, our battalion chief vehicle, looking at ways to slowly start that EV process, but we're definitely open and looking those, but reliability and the ability to ensure that response is imperative for us and that's where we're operating off of.
Thank you.
You bet.
Okay, Councilmember Jacobson.
How is the lifespan of these machines determined?
How's lifespan, they are, is determined by where they're positioned, where they're operated at, how many hours of use, they're being used through training, through actual pump use, the wear and tear on that, so a bunch of factors, the mechanical evaluations, so you know, can we potentially squeak a few extra years out, that's what we're doing here with the need for a potential five-year wait, we're going to be past our replacement, we're getting to that 20-year, but it's evaluated mechanics, we have fire mechanics that are rated, trained, that are evaluating that and that's based off also the NFPA, the National Standard, and Washington Survey Rating Bureau, which starts stipulating at 25 years, anything, even a pickup truck, we start getting negative points against. And as you found out, we, not to divert to the WSRB component, but we were very close to increasing or decreasing our number by .01% and we're hoping next time we can be able to do that with some additions, but the WSRB also helps us evaluate and provides us a method to identify age of vehicles.
Okay, quickly, Councilmember Weiger.
Real quick, having grown up in LA, a few miles from Pacific Palisades, you have me at the first picture, I just wonder if you could speak about kind of the rate impact over time, these trucks are expensive, but they're spread out over time and the rebate we might get on surplus thing, like in general, it's spread out, it's incremental and it's absolutely necessary. Could you just talk about the rate kind of modeling that goes with bringing in capital into the project?
So maybe I will defer a little bit more to Finance Director McCormick, but you know, yes, they are expensive, we do take incredibly good care of them, value that as an asset to the public, we take great pride in ownership, when I say ownership, it's that esprit de corps within the crew, so I can assure you that the apparatus that you entrust to your firefighters are treated like our own and we will do our best to provide as long a life, serviceable life as possible with that.
Councilmember Reynolds?
This question may be for Mr. Morneck more than anything else, but we had on the consent agenda this cooperative purchasing agreement, can you explain a little more how that works? Do they negotiate the price for us as well and do they, you know, do they check other brands besides Pierce or is Pierce something we need to have in order to be compatible with the rest of the fleet?
Sure, so if you bear with me, if we go to the next slide and then I'll be wrapping it up and I might be able to help start that process and then pass it over.
Thank you.
So back in December of '24, E for Eastside Fire and Rescue notified the city apparatus about potential apparatus discounts with a combined purchase. Eastside Fire and Rescue's in the process of purchasing three fire apparatus and then with Mercer Island, we're able to work collaboratively with Sourcewell. Sourcewell is a local government procurement cooperative and then in sense with financing component, they work with Pierce, who is the manufacturer of our fire apparatus and our local distributor who is Hughes Fire Equipment and so with that process, we're working in collaboration with the city Mercer Island, Eastside Fire and Rescue, Sourcewell to get as good of a price, and I use that term loosely, as we can to ensure that we're doing everything in our power to reduce that impact to the citizens of both Eastside Fire and Mercer Island.
So just to make sure, it sounds like, yes, they are doing negotiating for us, they're apparently very precise about it because they get down to 76 cents or whatever at the end of the number, I was very impressed by that, but did they, is Pierce the only name in town or do we have to do that to be compatible with the rest of the fleet and solve training issues and things like that?
So one of the things in the fire service is it's that muscle memory component and so Pierce is something that Mercer Island has operated with, you have purchased from Hughes before, Woodinville, Duval and other contract agencies within Eastside Fire also utilize a Pierce fleet and so going with the Pierce, they are a very reliable company that we've had very good success with and so when we have gone and looked and talked with Sourcewell and our T groups have worked with manufacturer Hughes to get the best deal that we can at this point.
Thank you.
Okay, that was the last slide, right?
That was the last slide.
All right, council, any other questions?
And I will turn this over to Finance Director for just a couple more slides, four more slides.
One more slide.
Sorry, went on a little bit.
So close.
Okay, we're on the next slide, great. And so when our colleagues reached out to the team here at Mercer Island in late December, we got right to work, specifically Carson Hornsby, who's driving our slide deck this evening, management analyst, and our Chief of Administration, Ali Speets, they were able to move very quickly and we're here tonight because of their very hard work, so thank you for that. We reached out to seven different banks who are in the line of business of financing the acquisition of fire trucks for fire agencies and local governments and the most favorable terms came back from Municipal Asset Management, Inc., which is based out of Golden, Colorado. And so we're going to acquire these two vehicles through a lease purchase agreement for a combined total price of $1.96 million, we're going to pay down that cost over nine years at an interest rate of 4.89% and that's going to result in about an annual payment of debt service that the city's going to have to pay for the next nine years of about $267,000. As the council is well aware, with a lease purchase agreement, there is a lien placed on the vehicles until the city makes our final payment in year nine, at which point the liens are released and the city takes full ownership of these vehicles, they will continue however to be maintained and operated by Eastside Fire and Rescue. Next slide. The city's fleet fund is going to cover these debt service payments, however, based on the prices of these two fire apparatus and the new reality with making large equipment purchases in the post-pandemic world after a period of historically high inflation, staff needs to return to the city council, most likely during a future budget workshop within some updated assumptions for maintaining the city's fleet and for potentially adding additional funding for future large equipment purchases, so that's coming at a future budget workshop. Next slide, please. And so the recommendation before council this evening is to conduct the first reading of ordinance number 25-04 authorizing the purchase of these two fire apparatus via a purchase agreement and set the second reading of the ordinance for February 4th, 2025. Any remaining questions?
Councilmember Jacobson.
At what point do we draw down the loan, given the 38 to 54-month potential weight for these two pieces of equipment?
Could you please clarify that question?
Yes, we're borrowing close to $2 million bucks to pay for these.
Right.
Less whatever the equipment, the sinking fund or whatever we call it has, so I have no idea what that number is, but as far as the loan is concerned, do we draw it down? Do we start from today or do we do it when the equipment arrives?
So we are taking advantage of about $234,000 in discounts by paying upfront and so we are going to pay for these vehicles within the next 30 days, once council takes action on the ordinance and gives staff the authority to secure the best possible price and we will begin our debt service payments June 2025 of this year. So we will pay down the full acquisition of the vehicles by June 2033.
And that's an annual, we negotiated an annual payment?
Annual payment.
Okay, I have one other question, nobody else?
Go ahead.
And that is, how much is available in the sinking fund to pay for these two apparatus?
We have adequate reserves in the sinking fund, about $720,000 at the end of Q3 of 2024 and we will continue making our contributions into the fleet fund to make sure that we have adequate financing through the nine-year term.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Reynolds?
Yeah, for avoidance of doubt, I think you said the annual payments were $267,000 or something like that, so we basically had enough money in the fleet fund to pay for two and a half, for somewhere between two and a half and three years worth of the debt service, right, at this point?
Right, right.
Okay, and when we sell those vehicles, the ones that are going to be surplused out in four years, will that money go straight back into the fleet fund or does it go back into the general fund of the city or where does it go?
The financing mechanisms that we are currently using were put in place in 2007 and that has been the practice since these, we've been in the business of owning and operating fire trucks, so we will continue to do that, however, as I mentioned earlier, we will need to come back to the council to discuss the funding mechanisms and potential additional funding needs for the acquisition of future large equipments like fire trucks.
I'm not sure I'm understanding or maybe you didn't understand the question, I'm not sure which, presumably, let's say we sell one of these for $100,000, where does that money go?
That money's going to go back into the respective reserve to acquire future fire trucks.
Or realistically in this case to help pay for the ones we just bought, presumably, yeah.
Yeah, but I.
But it's all part of a discussion about how to fund that fund.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Yeah, do we know, absent the purchase sort of partnership that we have, what the sticker price of these would be?
The velocity pumper, the larger fire truck, has a sticker price of about $1.4 million and we're getting it at a discount to 1.25.
Great.
Which far exceeds the anticipated price that we forecasted when we've made assumptions on how we were going to pay for future fire trucks.
Yeah, well, hats off to you and the team for getting on that to cut our losses a little bit there and while we have the fire leadership here also, I want to echo what Councilmember Weiger said, you know, so many folks in this community have connections to Los Angeles area and I know is a real point of pride to see the units down there helping out and folks here were looking for a way to support those folks, so thanks.
Great, all right, Reynolds, old hand? Okay, council, is there a motion to set ordinance number 25-04 authorizing purchase of two fire apparatus, one Pierce velocity pumper, one Pierce freight liner pumper and authorizing a purchase agreement with Hughes Fire Industry, Fire Equipment, Inc. and master tax exempt installment purchase agreement with Municipal Asset Management, Inc., finance both fire apparatus for second reading and adoption on February 4th, 2025?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Weinberg, seconded by Jacobson. Council, any discussion? Ally, you're looking at me like I did something wrong. All right, City Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Councilmember Weinberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Jacobson.
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Aye.
Councilmember Andrell.
Aye.
Councilmember Weiger.
Aye.
And Mayor Neese.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, motion passes. Our next item of regular business is AB 660, middle housing and accessory dwelling units, HB 1110, HB 1337 and SB 5258 compliance. Welcome CPD Director Jeff Thomas remotely and Allison Van Gorb.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, council. For the record, Jeff Thomas with CPD, joining me is Allison Van Gorb and we also have our city attorney as well as Beal Park, as well as Kim Pratt, our contract attorney with the city attorney's office that have been supporting us during this effort here over the last number of weeks, they're both available tonight to help out as well if necessary. So Allison is going to take you through a slide deck that we've prepared for the Agenda Bill this evening, this is the second work session in a series of two that we're having on this subject prior to the public hearing that we have scheduled for February 4th, your next meeting, at which time an ordinance with a set of interim regulations will be presented to the city council for first reading and then subsequent second reading and adoption thereafter. Tonight, as we advertised during the first work session, we are hoping to get some direction from the council tonight, there are a series of six motions, I believe, in the packet with your Agenda Bill on this subject, Allison's going to walk you through those as part of her presentation and she is also, before we get to those, going to recap one particular subject from last week, unit lot subdivisions, that we had a couple of questions on from city council members in advance of the meeting tonight, so we're going to do a refresher on that and also then get into a little bit more detail on the draft motions and staff recommendations in your packet. With that, Allison, I think we're ready to go.
All right, thank you, Jeff. For the record, Allison Van Gorb, Deputy Director of Community Planning and Development. Let me just get this started here. Interesting. Okay, so I've got about 15 or 16 slides, I'll go through fairly quickly and then I'm happy to take questions. I think Jeff just kind of gave you the overview here, I'm going to go through a couple of topics from the last meeting and then walk through the policy questions in the Agenda Bill, give you some of our recommendations, next steps, and we'll have time for questions at the end. So in summary, from what we talked about last time, there's three pieces of legislation that we're looking to comply with here with a set of interim regulations, first is HB 1110, the middle housing bill, it requires us to permit moderate density, middle housing on all residential lots, we need to allow two to four units and we can't have requirements that are more strict than what we are applying for single family, there's also some limitations on the amount of parking we can require. HB 1337 is the second piece of legislation, this is the ADU bill, it requires us to permit two accessory dwelling units per lot, those can be attached, detached or a combination, they can also be a conversion of an existing structure, this has the same limitations on parking requirements as are in 1110, there's also a limitation on impact fees and we can no longer require owner occupancy of the ADU. Finally, SB 5290, another piece of legislation, this one contains provisions for unit lot This one contains provisions for unit lot subdivision. This is a type of short subdivision that creates unit lots from a parent lot and allows fee simple ownership for middle housing and ADUs. I'll talk a little bit more about this topic in a second. Hopefully provide a little more clarity about how this process works. So just to quickly recap from last meeting, we're looking to comply with all three of these pieces of legislation, as well as implement the housing element in the comprehensive plan that was recently updated by the city council. We had initially talked about doing this with one code amendment, but in consulting with the city attorney's office, we've now determined that we should split that into two ordinances. So the first ordinance will concern middle housing and ADUs, and the second ordinance will concern unit lot subdivision. So just wanted to clarify that in terms of process. We're looking at two phases for this work. Here, right now, we're in phase one, looking to adopt interim development regulations that will help us attain minimum compliance with these pieces of legislation. A phase two will occur over the next couple of years, and that would include additional community engagement and working to tailor these regulations to fit the needs of Mercer Island in a bit more detail. All right, so diving into unit lot subdivision. I tried to put together a few graphics to illustrate how this works. I've heard a number of questions, particularly about setbacks and how those would apply on the parent lot and the unit lot, so this is intended to illustrate that. So a parent lot is any, like, existing lot in Mercer Island today, or any lot that's created according to our current subdivision standards and meeting the minimum lot size and other requirements for a legal lot. Each lot has setbacks that are established in our code. Those apply to this parent lot, whether it's developed with a single-family home and any associated structures like a garage or a shed. And then that parent lot could later be divided using unit lot subdivision, which is a type of short subdivision. It can be used to create up to four lots. These are called unit lots. They're sometimes also called a child lot, because they're literally a portion of the parent lot. The setbacks continue to apply to the parent lot even as these smaller unit lots would be carved out. In this example, I've shown that the garage was converted to an ADU, and an additional attached ADU was constructed as part of the single-family home. And then each of those were divided into a separate unit lot with common ownership of the access driveway. To go a little further into this concept, as well as the concept of unit density, which we also talked about last week, there's a lot of different types of configurations that would be possible based on HB 1110 and 1337. Like we've talked about, they would allow ADUs in a variety of different middle housing types. So I tried to illustrate a few of the things that could potentially be developed under these provisions in Mercer Island. So for example, this was the one I just went through, a single-family home with two ADUs. You could also have a single-family home with two duplex units, and those could all be separated on unit lots. You could have two duplexes, each on their own unit lot. You could have four townhomes. Again, they could each be on their own unit lot. I see a hand up, so I'll pause there for questions.
Councilmember Andrell?
Yeah, thanks. What's the difference between picture number one and picture number two, with a single-family home with two ADUs and a single-family home with two duplexes?
Yeah, I mean, it's really not a huge difference, but an ADU would be, under our proposal, would be limited to 1,000 square feet per unit for each ADU, whereas the duplexes and the single-family home would be limited by just the gross floor area limit for the lot and any other dimensional standards like setbacks. So the size of the duplex units could potentially be bigger than ADUs. But in terms of, you know, what you're seeing on the property, it could be potentially fairly similar.
Okay, and so, and, well, I don't know if there are other questions, but I do have a follow-up if I can keep going.
Feel free.
So are the setbacks from neighboring properties unaffected by this? It's only setbacks from each other?
So the setback just applies to the parent lot. The unit lots don't have a different setback. So, yeah, the setbacks would just be between the boundaries of the parent lot with any neighboring parent lots.
And that's unaffected? The current regulations are unaffected by this?
Correct. They would still have to comply with those setbacks.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Reynolds?
So to follow up on Councilmember Andrell's question, if I were to come to the city under the current regulations right now and ask you to build a 3,000-square-foot home with an 1,100-square-foot ADU, you would, I think, say, nope, can't do that because it's over 900 square feet. Am I correct so far?
Yes.
And if I then say, okay, fine, I'm going to call it a duplex, would I then be able to do it by just changing the name?
So it's a single-family unit and an attached second unit?
Well, I guess you couldn't do the duplex right now under the current rules, because they're not allowed, but, but once they are allowed, would you be able to...
If the proposal that we're currently developing were adopted, you could have two attached units, as long as they complied with the gross floor area permitted on the property and the other dimensional standards.
So the 1,000-square-foot limit on the ADUs doesn't really mean anything, because somebody could just change what they call it? Is that correct?
There's definitely some overlap here in terms of the different definitions and, you know, how that applies. So ADUs are limited to 1,000 square feet. Duplexes are just limited by the gross floor area. So I think the answer to your question is yes. If they changed what they called it from an ADU to a duplex, that could potentially be permitted that way.
And I imagine that might have market perception of the value of the property, or the way the bank might view the value of the property, but zoning code, no. Okay, thank you.
I mean, I think the follow-along is that there would be parking regulatory limits that would be different for a duplex than an ADU. So you would subject yourself to a greater parking requirement. Okay, I see another hand. Councilmember Andrell?
Yeah, so just going back to this, so then, I guess, depending on the size of the lot, 8,400 versus 12,000 versus 15,000, if you could potentially, I mean, if you're limited on ADUs to 900 or 1,000 square feet, then that's the limit, but on the duplex units, if it's a larger lot and you're only limited by gross floor area, then you get to build larger duplexes. Am I tracking that right?
Yeah, I mean, it depends on the size of the lot and the zone it's in. And you'd look at the lot coverage percentage, so the gross floor area allowed would be 40% of the lot area up to a cap that is set by each zone. I actually have this information on another slide that I'm going to get to in a few minutes, so it might make sense to talk about it then. But yeah, like, say you have a lot that has a gross floor area of 4,000 square feet. You could build two 2,000-square-foot duplexes on that lot, potentially.
The significant variable here, and Allison's showing on the first two, the first two diagrams there, is the fact that a single-family home, you know, is either being retained or is being constructed as well. And that is, as the council is aware of, I think we discussed that last week a little bit, that's a variable that we didn't anticipate was going to be permitted under HB 1110 when this all started and prior to the Commerce Guidance coming out. So under that second diagram there, that duplex unit is going to be very small. There are going to be very small units with, you know, either an existing or a single-family home being constructed on the particular parcel, so.
Okay. Councilmember Weinberg?
I presume that one of the other key differences between the first two diagrams is that the duplex units have to be adjoining, whereas the AD units could be separate. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Yes.
Okay. Allison, I'm going to ask you to carry forth.
Okay, so we identified six policy questions in the Agenda Bill that we need council direction on. I'm going to go through each of these one by one and provide a little more information, as well as our staff recommendation. So the first question is about the middle housing types. HB 1110 requires us to permit at least six of the identified nine housing types. The staff recommendation is to permit the six shown here on the screen, duplex, triplex, fourplex, townhouse, courtyard apartment, and stacked flat. We have left off the fiveplex and sixplex, primarily because we're only required to allow two or four units of density per lot. So the five and sixplex wouldn't really be applicable here in Mercer Island. Those wouldn't be applicable in larger cities. And finally, we also left off cottage housing. And the reason for that is cottage housing typically requires some additional development regulations to ensure that it's developed with a configuration, you know, around a centralized open space and with smaller detached units. If we were to permit cottage housing with our current single-family development regulations, it could result in two larger detached units that would appear similar to two single-family homes in a lot. And we thought that wasn't really achieving the intent of cottage housing. And so we'd like to wait to roll that out with additional development regulations if the council desires to permit that housing type. I see another question?
Is that a new hand?
Yeah. Yeah, it is a new hand. Thank you. So the difference between a courtyard apartment and cottage housing?
The courtyard apartment is attached, so, you know, they're side-by-side or stacked units that are arranged around a courtyard in an attached configuration, whereas courtyard, or, sorry, cottage housing units are detached.
Okay. And so on the, just a follow-up question, well, maybe I need to defer to Councilmember Reynolds, but I do have one other question on this slide.
Okay, go ahead and wrap it up, and I'll go to Councilmember Andrell.
Yeah, I'm just wondering what the maximum number of units for, I mean, duplex, triplex, and fourplex, it obviously tells you how many units, but townhouse, courtyard apartment, and stacked flat, how many units are allowed in each of those?
It's flexible, and it would be governed by the maximum unit density for the lot. So for most lots, that's two units, but if they're within a quarter mile of light rail or they're providing an affordable unit, they could have up to four units.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Reynolds?
You may have just answered my main question, but I want to make sure I understand. The, we're allowing triplexes and fourplexes, but that is only subject to the affordability requirement, is that correct? Are we always allowing triplexes and fourplexes?
Well, they'd be subject to the affordability requirement...
Or closest to the transit.
The area close to the air station.
Okay. And then, is there a functional difference between a three-floor stacked flat and a triplex? Isn't that just a special type of a triplex?
The stacked flat is a type of triplex.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
These are the housing forms that were given to us by the state legislature. This is not your staff creating these housing forms. So as Allison has pointed out this evening, as well as two weeks ago, did we need all these specific names called out? The stacked flat versus the triplex is an excellent example. It's a triplex in reality, but here we are. It's a stacked flat on the screen, so.
Moving along, the second policy question is related to the alternative density options. There's called pages about this in the Agenda Bill, but I'll just give you the high points. So we have three options. The first is the standard density option. That's the two to four units per lot for the residential zones that we were just talking about. The second option would be, the legislation allows us to exempt up to 25% of the lots that meet certain criteria. Many of these don't apply to Mercer Island, but the one that would is critical areas. So we could exempt up to 25% of the lot where the critical area or the buffer would preclude middle housing development. So that has to do with the type of critical area and the extent on the lot. So this would only work for lots where there's typically a water course or a wetland that takes up a large part of the lot and would preclude development. Our mapping of these critical areas, you can see here on the screen, shows that, you know, there's very large areas of the island that are constrained by critical areas. However, this mapping is really at like a 10,000-foot level. It's not meant to be zoomed in to the fine grain of a lot and to tell us exactly where the boundaries are for each critical area and buffer. The way we manage that with single-family development right now is if we suspect a critical area on a lot, we require a critical areas report to be prepared by the applicant. This requires a qualified professional to go to the site and analyze things like soils and vegetation to determine, you know, which critical areas are present, their precise extent, and then to make recommendations for mitigation or protection of the resources. And so at this level of data that we have currently, it would be difficult to determine exactly which lots are constrained by critical areas to the level that middle housing development would be precluded. Trying to do that could have some equity issues. It could, you know, bring some lots in that shouldn't be in and exclude some that shouldn't be excluded. So, you know, there's some trade-offs with this approach. We don't really have the level of data that we would like to have if we wanted to pursue this. The third option under the legislation is to adopt substantially similar provisions, either by certain deadlines that have already passed, or that result in higher middle housing production within single-family zones than would be allowed by the standard density approach. So staff are also not recommending this third option, because we don't want to go over and above what's required under HB 1110 at this time. So kind of in summary, we're recommending option one, the standard approach. We think this is the most straightforward. It's achievable with the data tools that we have today. And it would have essentially the same result in terms of critical areas regulation. We would be applying our existing critical areas provisions to middle housing in the same way that we apply it to single-family. And when substantial critical areas exist on a lot, it would result in prohibiting middle housing development, especially for things like wetlands and water courses. I'll pause there to see if there's any questions.
Not seeing anything.
Okay. All right, so policy question three is about unit density and ADUs. We already talked about this a bit. Again, we'd be required to allow at least two units per lot in the R zones, and up to four units per lot when near a major transit stop or when one unit is affordable. HB 1110 gives us the option of including ADUs in this unit density calculation, and our staff recommendation is to set a maximum of two to four units per lot, and then include ADUs in that calculation. And the effect of that, if we did not include ADUs in the calculation, you could potentially have a scenario where, say, you have a duplex with two middle housing units, and then each of those has an ADU. So you could have two middle housing units and two ADUs. And, you know, by counting ADUs towards the unit density, it would prevent that from happening. So if you built the two middle housing units, that would be the maximum allowed for that lot. The fourth policy question has to do with the ADU floor area maximum. The Mercer Island City Code currently limits ADUs to 900 square feet. HB 1337 requires us to allow at least 1,000 square feet. So that's our staff recommendation, is just move from 900 to 1,000 square feet of GFA Somewhat related, question number five is ADU, the ADU floor area bonus. So this is the slide I was referring to a few minutes ago that includes the details of... of the code in terms of how much gross floor area is available based on lot size and the zone. We currently allow 40% of the lot area for gross floor area up to a maximum for each zone. So it's 5,000 square feet in R 8.4, 8,000 square feet in R 9.6, 10,000 square feet in R 12, and 12,000 square feet in R 15. And this serves as a cap on the largest house that you could build if you had a very large lot or if you consolidated multiple lots. And the code currently provides bonus floor area of up to 5% of the lot area, so this could go up to 45% when a ADU and a new or rebuilt single-family home are applied for together. And that goes up to a maximum of 4,500 square feet in total GFA.
Got a question from Councilmember Weinberg.
Yeah, this might relate to the previous slide. I'm trying to reconcile how a unit limit of two units per lot would align with our need to allow fourplexes. Isn't a fourplex by definition four units?
It is, and the fourplex would come into play when you're either in a quarter-mile from the transit station, or if one of the units is affordable, it's that affordability bonus.
So does HB 1110 require us to allow fourplexes only within the quarter-mile of the, of the train station, or is it requires that, requires us to allow it all over the island?
Well, they would be allowed in all of the R zones, but a certain unit density would also be one of the provisions, and so you can only achieve a unit density of two units per lot in most of the R zone areas. And then just in the quarter-mile from transit or with the affordability bonus, could you be able to actually permit a four-unit structure?
Interesting, so you're saying that we're required to allow fourplexes, or six of the nine, and if we include fourplexes, that would be one of them, but we're not required to allow it in every R zone? We can restrict certain R zones to, or certain parts of the island to be just two units and therefore essentially not have fourplexes allowed in that area?
Yeah, so we have to allow the fourplexes everywhere. However, there's a second provision about the unit density, and that could restrict you to just two units on most lots. So while a fourplex is allowed to comply with this second provision, you would not actually be able to permit one.
Interesting, okay, thanks.
Okay, so this is our final policy question related to impact fees. We currently apply impact fees to all single-family and multifamily development, but we do not impose impact fees on ADUs currently. Based on the two bills, 1110 and 1337, we, we could look to add impact fees for middle housing and ADUs. HB 1337 limits the impact fees for ADUs to 50% of the single-family rate. So our staff recommendation is that we do institute impact fees on middle housing and ADUs by applying our existing rates as shown on the slide here. So for middle housing, one to two units would get the single-family rate, and three or more units would get the multifamily rate. And for ADUs, we would apply the multifamily rate not to exceed 50% of the single-family rate. And this would require just a solution to the code we're talking about.
Looks like Allison's having a little internet bandwidth issue there. The last note there on this slide is that this is a fee schedule update only, there's no actual amendment to Chapter 19 of the NISPA code required. All right.
Okay, so that was the last policy issue. In terms of next steps, well, we have a public hearing scheduled for February 4th for the first reading of draft ordinance, ordinances related to these items, and the second reading would then be on March 4th, and we would set an effective date for June 30th, 2024, to comply with the legislation. I have a slide here with the recommendation, the recommended motions, if we need that on the screen later, and then if there's any other questions, I'm happy to take those now.
Okay, thank you for that. Council, are there any questions before we get into the motion? I'm going to jump to the first motion then. Council, is there a motion to direct staff to prepare an ordinance containing interim development regulations for public hearing and consideration on February 4, 2025 incorporating the following six middle housing types: duplex, triplex, fourplex, townhouses, courtyard apartments, stacked flats?
So moved. Second.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Reynolds, seconded by Councilmember Weinberg. Any discussion? All right, City Clerk, please call a roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Weinberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacobson?
Aye.
Mayor Neese?
Aye.
Councilmember Andrell?
Aye.
And Councilmember Wyker?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, moving to the next one. Council, is there a motion to direct staff to prepare an ordinance containing interim development regulations for public hearing and consideration on February 4, 2025 incorporating the standard density approach, option one?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum, seconded by Councilmember Weinberg. Any discussion? Not seeing any, please call a roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Andrell?
Aye.
Mayor Neese?
Aye.
Councilmember Weinberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacobson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wyker?
Aye.
And Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Right.
All right, next motion, is there a motion to direct staff to prepare an ordinance containing interim development regulations for public hearing and consideration on February 4, 2025, setting an allowed unit density with a maximum of two units per lot in the R 8.4, R 9.6, R 12, and R 15 zones with a maximum of four units per lot permitted within one-quarter-mile walking distance of a major transit stop or when one unit is affordable. Additionally, the interim development regulations should specify that ADUs will be considered a unit for the purposes of calculating unit density.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Reynolds, seconded by Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum. Any discussion? Not seeing any, please call a roll.
Councilmember Wyker?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacobson?
Aye.
Mayor Neese?
Aye.
Councilmember Andrell?
Aye.
Councilmember Weinberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum?
Aye.
And Councilmember Reynolds.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, motion passes. The next one is a combined four, five motion, and if it fails, I'll go back to packets four and five. Council, is there a motion to direct staff to prepare an ordinance containing interim development regulations for public hearing and consideration on February 4, 2025, including a maximum floor area for ADUs of 1,000 square feet and to tie the existing 5% GFA bonus for ADU creation attached to single-family dwellings to a requirement of at least one parking space per ADU unit?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum, seconded by Councilmember Weinberg. Council, any discussion? City Clerk, please call a roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Neese?
Aye.
Councilmember Wyker?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum?
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilmember Andrell?
Aye.
Councilmember Weinberg?
Aye.
And Councilmember Jacobson?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Last, is there a motion to direct staff to prepare a resolution for consideration on March 4, 2025, to amend the city's fee schedule to apply existing impact fee rates to middle housing and ADUs?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Weinberg, seconded by Councilmember Jacobson. Not seeing any discussion, please, please call a roll.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum?
Aye.
Councilmember Wyker?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacobson?
Aye.
Councilmember Andrell?
Aye.
Mayor Neese?
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds?
Aye.
And Councilmember Weinberg.
Aye.
All right, motion passes, thank you. Now move to other business and planning schedule. Welcome, City Manager Jesse Martin.
Good evening again, City Council. I already, during my city manager report, reminded you about the upcoming planning session on February 4th. I want to remind you about one more meeting. It's February 6, special meeting from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. It's a joint meeting with the Mercer Island School District Board. I'll be working with Mayor Neese and the superintendent and board leadership to confirm the agenda ahead of that meeting, and that is all I have for you this evening.
Very good. Council, any upcoming updates to report?
March 18th, they'll be unavailable.
Okay, March 18th. Councilmember reports, Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum, may I have a report?
Nothing to report.
I have nothing to report, Councilmember Wyker?
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Weinberg?
Yep, my next monthly open brunch, or it'd be a lunch, actually, at noon on Saturday, February 15th, at Toshi's Teriyaki at the South End Shopping Center. As always, all are welcome. It's an open agenda, news, sports, weather, humor, even questions about city business. All I ask is that everybody show their respects to the chef by ordering some food and beverage.
Thank you, Councilmember Reynolds.
Nothing to report.
Okay, Councilmember Andrell.
Yeah, we had a YARA 8 Salmon Recovery Council meeting last week, and the proposed interlocal agreement between the agency and the member cities has been approved. I gave Jason a heads up on that at the time, that it was being voted on to be approved, and so it looks like we've got an agreement pending with the city for the next, and YARA 8 Salmon Recovery for the next 10 years.
Excellent. Councilmember Jacobson.
Two meetings to report. One is the Utility Board mentioned shortly after our last City Council meeting, and its attention was principally directed, and we had a report from Ecology on garbage and garbage issues, or... The other is the Open Space Conservancy Trust bylaws, or Open Space Conservancy Trust meeting, which was last week, and the bylaws were adopted by that group, and a number of other things were discussed, but no, nothing action-wise for us to consider here.
Excellent, thank you. All right, the City Council will hold this annual planning session at 12:00 p.m. on Tuesday, February 4, 2025. The next regular scheduled hybrid City Council meeting will also be February 4, beginning at 5:00 p.m. The time is now 7:00 p.m. The City Council will go into executive session for approximately one hour to consider the selection of a site or the acquisition of real estate by lease or purchase when public knowledge regarding such consideration would cause a likelihood of increased price pursuant to RCW 42.30.1101B. As a reminder to council, please stay seated until the city staff has terminated broadcast. Good evening, thanks for joining us tonight.